Okay, good morning, everyone. Excuse me, today is the Town Council regular meeting Wednesday, November 2nd, 2020 via go to meeting. So the pledge thing, we've come up with an idea that instead of all of us saying the pledge at the same time, we're gonna elect Dennis to lead us in the pledge, which would make things a little bit simpler for everybody. How about that, Dennis? You good with that?
Oh, but that one, well, that's a surprise. I better put my wig back on.
Because it makes it easier.
What do you have, look?
I pledge allegiance by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. See how easy that was? Much easier. All right, let's move on.
It's been an honor.
We're gonna add the number two. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time?
Yes, sir.
I feel.
Yeah, good morning. You can see I'm an eternal optimist. I just wanted to mention something briefly to all you good folks. I had a very little bit surprising call a couple of weeks ago from Doug Thomas of Strategic Government Resources, the shy and demure and very quiet, no-energy person that we got met, got to meet during a search. And, you know, I was very pleased to hear from him. He maintains these media search services for maybe a year or so of the towns he's worked in. So he noticed that Indian River was rocking and rolling. So he thought that'd be a good time to call and wanted to know about that. He wanted to know how we were doing, and I thought we were fitting into our new form of government quite well, and everything seemed to be going well. Of course, under the tremendous strain of the virus. But, so he wanted me to just say hello. He keeps in touch. I suppose he'll probably call you, Carl, at some point. So now you got something to look forward to. But anyway, that was real nice, and we're all glad it worked out well. So, and it was a late night for a few of us, I suspect. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Bill. All right, anybody else? Any other visitors? Okay, all right, seeing we're hearing none, we will move on to number three, which is the approval of the minutes for the October 21st, 2020 meeting. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Marked and abstained? Okay. All right, move on to number four, which is appointments and reappointments. We have three or four items that we'll address here. First would be up would be Phil Sangle, Green Party Fair Rent Commission for a term until 6/30/2024. Jonathan Pizer, I'm sorry, Pizer, I believe, Unaffiliated Public Works Commission for a term until 6/30/2023. Those are both appointments to vacated seats. Phil obviously served on the rent commission prior to this as a Republican. He was appointed as a Republican prior to. Now he's on the Green Party, so obviously he would be reappointed under his Green Party ticket. So at this point, look for a motion to appoint Phil Sangle, Green Party, to the Fair Rent Commission for a term until 6/30/2024.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you very much. Thank you, Phil. Moving on to Jonathan Pizer, Unaffiliated Public Works Commission for a term until 6/30/2023. Motion to approve or to appoint Jonathan to that position.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Good, thank you. And lastly, or not lastly, but Hugh Birdsdale, this is a sustainable committee appointment. When we originally put up the charge for the Sustainability Committee, we put a membership of seven people. Currently, they are at six. So Hugh would fill the last open seat on the Sustainability Committee. So at this point, a motion to appoint Hugh Birdsdale to the Sustainability Committee.
Make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it, Tim.
Any further discussion? All in favor to appoint Hugh Birdsdale to the Sustainability Committee?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. And then lastly, the Nine Town Transit Board of Directors. We've received an email, Carl received an email in reference to this. There's gonna be some merger talks and such going on, and we did have Virginia Zavoy, who was our contact to the Nine Transit. Virginia can no longer attend these meetings due to some health issues. So at this point, one of the conversations that Carl was having with them was that they were hoping that the CEOs of town would be more involved in this committee, because there will be merger talks going on. So it was my suggestion at that point that we appoint Carl to the Nine Transit Board of Directors so he can attend these meetings on behalf of Clinton, which is a big part of the Nine Transit, especially during these merger talks. So we'll look for a motion to appoint Carl to the Nine Transit Board of Directors.
I'd make that motion.
A second?
Second, I can.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, thank you. Moving on to number five. The chairman's reports, a couple things. So first, I guess most people have heard Joe Flynn, Sergeant Flynn from the Clinton Police Department, will be retiring effective tomorrow. So we would obviously would like to congratulate Joe and thank him for his 32 years of service to the town of Clinton with the Clinton Police Department. Wish him best of luck in his future endeavors. He's gonna be taking on the job at the state level. So congratulations to Joe and for all he's done here for the town of Clinton. And then I'll briefly talk, you know, I guess we want to put a thank you out to June, Wendy, and Sharon. Obviously, there's a lot of talk about what happened yesterday, the long lines, you know. Again, you know, we would like to thank, obviously, June, Wendy, and Sharon for all they've done in putting together, you know, what they could during this pandemic in this election cycle, which was like no other. We would also like to thank all the people that volunteered all day yesterday, dealing with some issues, obviously, when people came in, were, you know, complaining about long lines. You know, unfortunately, you know, in hindsight, you know, could things have been changed or things done differently? Yes, we probably, those things should probably be addressed. But unfortunately, I don't think anybody would have any reason to believe that we would have had the lines of people that we had to vote in this town. We should also be thankful that the number of people came out in Clinton and voted as they did. It was great to have that many people come out and vote in an election cycle in which they come out all the time, just in these, you know, big elections. So thank you to everybody. Yes, Tim?
I'd like to add to your comments, because I thought that they did an outstanding job in trying to make the, at least inside the building, as COVID protective as possible. Obviously, the lines were different than we're used to. Obviously, that was due to the COVID considerations. Well, it's a tight, you know, room, but I thought they did as good as they could possibly do to try to make it safe for everyone. So I think we should note that as well.
Thank you, Tim.
Honestly, I think all the problems came down to just not having divided up the streets properly. Otherwise, everything just went as smoothly as it could in light of the numbers of people that turned out, it was just poor division of the alphabet at the end of the day. But other than that, I think they did a phenomenal job. I know how hard they worked. They worked very, very, very hard for months.
Yep. All right, good. And I mean, you know, and also again, if we obviously thought that we would get the turnout that we did, so.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick note. I did hear from some folks about the possibility of a second polling place in forthcoming years, and I'm sure that that's been talked about with a lot of folks. So that's what I did hear from some of my friends about, is there ever a consideration of a second polling place? I think Clinton years ago had that.
I believe that that is allowed by the state and not just by the number of voters, but by the and they also tell you where, Christine probably has more information on this, probably recalls better than I do. But I think they also tell you where that second polling place was. And as far as I can recall, it was supposed, that it would be at the fire department across the street, which would eliminate any benefit in terms of parking or anything. I may be misrecalling, but I don't think that that's in our hands.
Um, I don't know. I remember it being at the firehouse, Carol, and that, of course, was because, if you remember, Clinton was split into two congressional districts at the time. So so moved the residents had to vote at the firehouse because they were in a different district.
But I think that sounds right, yep.
But from what I recall, or I guess we could research, I don't think the state can actually tell you where you have to have that second polling place. I think, you know, I remember a year or two ago, we had discussed, and I think you remember, there was a discussion that maybe we would go up to Morgan to try to get some of the pressure off and things of this nature, but it was decided that, you know, we would think about it in the future. And maybe there's something to think about in the future. If I was to think about it, I probably would prefer the Park Rec Building up at I Rock to have it, because then you really move the crowd up the road, and you don't disturb the school system. And there's certainly a lot of parking up there, but that's needed here and there. We can address that in the future.
Okay. Good. Okay, and then lastly, got an email, John Allen from the EDC. Ed sent me an email addressing how the Town Council can be more, I guess, engaged with our local businesses and being out there and talking to them and discussing with them. I guess one of the things that I discussed with John, it would be kind of difficult for us to set up a town council or have an individual from the Town Council be a liaison to doing that, because obviously, you know, having individuals speaking on behalf of the whole Town Council creates issues. So we're gonna have a meeting on Thursday with the EDC. Carl had come up with a suggestion, which would be hiring a part-time individual through the EDC. That would be that person. That would be the sort of the liaison between the EDC and the local businesses so that that person can engage with the local businesses to see if there are things that they, you know, what they need, if there are things, you know, things that, more things that we can do for the town. So it's gonna be the EDC, the chamber, Tim was invited, Eric was invited, and myself. So we're gonna have that meeting on Thursday. Just to kind of lay that out, Carl's gonna have some, you know, more conversations about that as far as how we set up, because obviously, it's a budget-related item if they do hire a part-time individual to do that. I thought it was a good idea, because then it does, you know, distance the Town Council from being out there, talking to the businesses, because we just, you know, again, you know, having an individual from the Town Council, talking to a business, you know, representing the Town Council, you know, we kind of want to get away from that. So having an individual through the EDC that can represent them, I think is a great idea. So we'll talk more about that on Thursday, and then we'll circle back next meeting to see what we can put together on that end. So as far as that goes, that is all I have. So we can now, at this point, move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Chris, can you just reiterate who's participating in that meeting and what it is?
John Allen, Bob Warner, Eric Burgman, Tim Boer, and myself were invited.
Thank you.
So you have my report. I attach for you some of the legislative concepts that CCM is gonna be advocating in the next legislative session. So that rounds, the attachments that you have round out the proposals and concepts that are gonna come out of CCM where they're looking for champions to, for some of those legislative initiatives. COVID, the governor, as you all know, at this point in time, has moved the state to Phase 2.1. So the state's been backed down from the Phase 3. The color coding system that was used briefly of yellow, orange, and red towns. Theoretically, that's updated this Thursday. I don't know how long that's gonna be kept in use, given the fact that the governor dialed the state back to Phase 2.1 of reopening. We're still monitoring cases as they come in, and there is still a spike in this part of the state. As it relates to COVID and some of our earlier expenses from March, we did receive our approval from FEMA for 75% of what were our eligible expenses. That remaining 25% and the ineligible expenses were all supposed to be charged against the State's CARES Act funding. So we have approval from the state for the other sleeve of funding. So between the two pots of FEMA and state money, the town's been made whole for our COVID expenses that went through the end of the fiscal year. It's unknown right now as to whether or not OPM is gonna open it up again for further reimbursement to cover additional costs that might be incurred by towns as we continue to have to respond to COVID. In the rest of the report, I gave you an update on where RiverCog is at with what was happening in some of their recent meetings. The state is following a recovery framework that it really hasn't used before. So there's an emphasis of looking at long-term recovery. The leadership for that position has changed. It's now in the hands of another individual. The emphasis is now pushing more of that burden down onto the Councils of Governments to coordinate the cogs. While they can, they have more of a regional footprint, maybe that's the better delivery vehicle. They have funding issues in order to be able to figure out how they're supposed to help towns with long-term recovery. The model did not involve a lot of state funding, and the burden was on raising dollars in the community to address short-term needs. But I think it's pretty obvious that there's gonna be a lot of long-term needs unless the economy recovers and the eviction prohibition that's currently in place will cause more problems once evictions are allowed to move forward. So what those recovery issues are gonna look like will become, become larger and larger as time goes on. And the cog is figuring out its process to do a regional housing plan for the cog region. A few towns have direct dollars that they receive from the state for grants to do an affordable housing plan. Others did not. Old Saybrook has the funding from that grant program, and they were willing to open it up to be used to help with a regional plan. So between Old Saybrook's grant dollars and some cog funding, the intention is to move forward with a regional housing plan that would then have annexes that would have to be adopted town by town to comply with its management. So that should be something that unfolds going forward into the new year. And then legislators' agenda for the cog that will evolve over this month and next month so that they want to try and get something in front of elected leaders and newly-elected leaders before January starts. That's it.
Mr. Manager, just two quick questions here. I'd like to be kept abreast. I think the council should be kept abreast on how the cogs are gonna deliver this COVID recovery. That's an interesting concept. And it says in your report that there may be, and there has been some problems. So I'd like, if possible, to be kept abreast of that. And then CCM's legislative proposal to promote municipal revenue diversification, that's an interesting idea. And if that also could be something you keep us abreast in the coming months, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably easier for me to give you updates on the CCM piece, because it's sort of more definitive. At this point in time, the cog response for long-term COVID recovery is fairly nebulous at this point. So once that starts to crystallize more, I'll be able to get more freedom reporting on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Carl. All right, move on to number seven, the Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Who wants to start? I know Eric does. He always wants to start. Nothing?
No, I did hear, as far as the planning and zoning, Carl's gonna meet with the committee, I believe, next week, if I'm not mistaken, and that's, for the most part, the only report I have.
Okay. Anybody else? All good? All right. Nothing else? We'll move on to number eight. We need a motion to go into executive session. Personnel pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-268 and invite Carl and Mary.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? Hey. Thank you. We are now out of executive session, and we'll move on to item number nine, which is legal services. At this point, look for a motion to appoint Martha Kona as the Town Legal Counsel.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one question. How long's the contract, Mr. Chairman?
I guess that would be negotiated when Carl has that discussion with them. Yeah, we started the discussion of the engagement, and the RFP was a three-year term.
Three years?
Yeah.
One more question. Carl, that reassessment after six months, is that kind of standard or is that something they're asking for that's unusual? The assessment of the on-call of the retainer?
In my experience, to take a look at the retainer after a few months is unusual in that normally, once a firm locks you into a retainer, they lock you in, and that's it. There isn't normally a look back to see if you're utilizing it sufficiently.
How do you feel about this?
I'm fine with it in two of three permutations. One, if it swings in our favor to reduce the cost. The other, if it leaves the cost alone. I think if we're heavily utilizing them on retainer, they're gonna be looking for an adjustment, and then that's more an issue of on our side of what are we doing to control how we're using them or not using them.
Oh, okay. All right. That sounds good.
And Carl is a three, I'm sorry, Carl, a three-year term, that's standard for municipal firms, correct?
I don't think there's any standard. It's an appointment. So it could be a one-year, it could be a two-year, it could be a four-year, could be indefinite year to year. So there isn't really a rhyme or reason. It's up to the will of the council or the elected body for how long they want to engage a firm.
Is the council okay with a three-year term? Is the council okay with the three-year term? Is that something we wish to discuss, or are we gonna go with that?
Anyone?
I feel it's too long. I'd be happier with a two-year term.
I could agree with that.
All right, we typically, for auditing services, have a three-year contract as well. It is helpful to have some sort of consistency. Contracts are contracts, and you can always, you know, get out of them at the end of the day if need be. There's lots of pauses in them, so.
And the RFP did go out at three years, correct, Carl? That was the proposed initial engagement, and that dovetails with every other engagement that the town has issued. You typically have used a three-year as a baseline for pretty much most of municipal services that are contracted.
I think three years is fair.
I do, too.
So since the general public hasn't been involved in the process or discussion, it might be helpful to bring them up to speed in the public forum of why we bid and also, you know, just the rationale for going out to bid for a firm that is all-inclusive. So I think it's important, this was something that came up while I was first selectman, and we felt as though it was very important to have the opportunity to collapse all the different firms together so that there's better communication throughout the town. And then also, obviously, you save some money with the legal issues that we are experiencing with the lack of communication between our legal entities in the town.
Once again, I fall back on the fact that the Town Council was elected to represent the people. They were given the opportunity to assess and choose the individuals for the Town Council. They normally trust the Town Council to make wise and considered opinions for them, choices for them. I think that to engage the public in the choice of the legal counsel that we use would delay this indefinitely, and I can't possibly fathom what would be gained from that except for 13,000 different opinions. It just seems like another delay sort of situation, Christine, doesn't it? I mean, you had two years to provide your legal counsel, and it never happened. So I
Excuse me, Carol, if you had listened, I said it would be helpful to get the public up to speed as to the decision that was made in executive session so that they could
It sounded as though you were talking about doing that prior to making a decision.
No, Carol, all I asked was that the public be informed with how we came to a decision of utilizing this specific firm. We made this decision in executive session, and I think the public just has the, has some sort of opportunity to hear from their counsel as to, we've chosen a firm, why we've chosen a firm, and we're happy with this firm. That's all. I'm not asking to go to the public.
I do believe that that will be the case afterwards, because everything that we do in Town Council is reported on very effectively by our Eric O'Connell reporter. I don't think that's something we have to worry about necessarily.
I was just asking for our leadership to provide guidance as to why we have rendered a decision. Very simple is that. That is our role. It's a Town Council to provide the public with our views on why we've come to a decision. Seems pretty basic. That's all. I'm finished.
Right, seeing as how, seeing as how there wasn't a whole lot of engagement with the public in the last two years, Christine, there was kind of a vacuum of information going even out to the Board of Selecting. But anyway, all right, let's move forward.
I know, I guess the issue then becomes, I don't think it's an issue at all, but I mean, I think this Town Council's done an outstanding job communicating to the public what we've worked on, what we've done, we've put messages out there, we've communicated to the public. There would be no reason why this would be something that we wouldn't do either. Obviously, we would announce that we would have new legal counsel representing the town. And, you know, as such, that message will go out once everything is finalized and done. So I appreciate your opinion, but I mean, I don't think that, you know, we need to go down this road of, you know, make sure that we do all this stuff. I mean, I think we've done a great job communicating to the public everything that the Town Council is doing, what we're working on, and we're gonna move on and continue to do. So at this point, we have a motion to appoint Martha Kona. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. All right, and at this point, then we'll move on to number 10, which is a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second?
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, thank you again, everybody, thanks.
Everybody have a good day.
This conference is no longer being recorded.